I'd like to welcome everybody to the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners meeting workshop meeting for Wednesday, December fourth, two thousand and twenty four. We're going to rise to observe a moment of silence followed by pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to remind everybody that we are live streaming our meeting today. And today is a workshop meeting. We have two meetings workshop and then legislative today is our workshop meeting. We will take up a number of these actions next week, the first of which are the approval of minutes for the November twentieth, two thousand and twenty four workshop meeting, the November twentieth seventh, two thousand and twenty four legislative meeting, and then November twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four salary board meetings. Executive sessions held between meetings, Mr. Peace.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
On December third, or yep, December third, Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the two thousand and twenty five budget, consideration of the sale and lease of real property, county authorities and commissions, county contractors, RFPs, and matters of personnel. In addition to the solicitor's office, Director of Budget and Finance Christopher Davis was in attendance to discuss budget matters, as well as Jay Wanger from RBC and Scott Shear from PFAM, who were present to discuss the matters of real property.
Any questions for Mr. Peace? Hearing none. This is the first opportunity for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to comment on any items today on the agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Commissioner Pries, the Oversight of Emergency Management, for the presentation of our Craig Webb Memorial Awards. Commissioner Pries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like the Director of nine one one EMA and Public Safety, Jeff Enders, to come forward. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Okay, this is a event each year that we look forward to because it gives us an opportunity to say thank you to our first responders, our police, fire, and EMS. And this is specifically called the Craig Webb Memorial Award. It embodies the spirit of the late Craig Webb, who passed away unexpectedly during the holiday season, twenty years ago, two weeks from today, December eighteenth, two thousand and four. And he's an individual who gave his heart and soul to the community in the area of public service. He's an individual who, I know a former board treasurer, De Francisco, isn't here, but when he was Commissioner, along with Commissioner Hartwick and Commissioner Hayes, they established this award. And it's something that we look forward to as a way to say thank you for what our first responders do twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. When we're at a meeting like this, or at home watching TV, or out at dinner, and that alarm goes off, we're still at a meeting like this, or home watching TV, or out at dinner. But our first responders are responding in a moment's notice to assist those residents in their time of greatest need. And we can never thank them enough. And this is one small way for us to say thank you to those individuals. We have three outstanding individuals who will be receiving this award today. I have the honor of presenting for law enforcement. We also have fire and EMS that my colleagues represent. But before we get to that, I'm going to ask Director Enders to make a few comments. And I always appreciate you providing us the actual number of calls for assistance each year. Last year, four hundred and twenty thousand calls came in to our nine one one center, and we dispatched three hundred and fourteen thousand calls, two hundred and fifty thousand, it's a quarter million calls for police, fifty thousand for EMS, and fourteen thousand for fire. Those folks are there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. And Treasurer, I was just mentioning your name and said back in two thousand and eight, you helped establish the Craig Webb Memorial Award. And I know he was somebody who was near and dear to you as well. So I want to thank you for establishing that award. And that's one of the reasons why we're here today. Without further ado, Director Enders, would you please like to make some comments?
Just a few comments. First and foremost, today's award winners, all three of which are what I think embodies the true volunteer. Yes, there's some are receiving it for their paid professions, but after they go home from their eight or ten now, or day, on their paid job, they continue to volunteer for us as county residents and provide us that same safety level in their hometowns, home areas, or whether they're traveling to and from that area in between, they also provide that service. And all three gentlemen that are here today, I can't say enough of each of them and how much, and I look, you know, that in this case, like they're God servants, they provide for us that safety that each one of us needs at any given moment, whether they're at home, as the Commissioner spoke to, eating dinner, or doing whatever. These three gentlemen that are here today are the ones that we count on as public citizens to provide us that help and that need. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that sacrifice that their families give, allowing those three gentlemen to have that time to spend with us and take it away from them. So that's critical.
And I had mentioned the amount of calls that come in. And for every one of these individuals receiving the award today, there was somebody that connected them and dispatched them. And our telecommunications, the work that they do on our behalf is pretty remarkable. They take the calls from our residents when they're having literally some of the worst moments of their entire life. And they're the cool, calm, collected people on the other end of that phone line, handling the call and dispatching these folks to go render aid. All right. At this time, I'd like Garrett Miller to please come on up and have a seat next to Director Enders. I'm going to read a little bit about Craig Webb, actually, as he's coming up. Morning, sir. Craig graduated from Middletown High School in nineteen seventy-nine, and in the early eighties, he spent four years in the U.S. Navy on the aircraft carrier USS Ranger. He was an emergency medical services person for twenty-one years and was a paramedic for six years. Emergency medical services was his first love, and he seemed happiest in saving others. His entire life was one of service to others. He served as a firefighter and chief of paramedics in Lower Square Township, a policeman in Dolphin Borough, and a deputy coroner here in Dolphin County. He was also employed by the MS Hershey Medical Center as a paramedic. Andy worked as a dispatcher for Middletown Police, was a military trainer at forty Indian Town Gap, was a volunteer at the Londonderry Fire Department, where he was the Assistant Chief for Ambulance Services. He was also elected Secretary Treasurer of the Dolphin County Emergency Management Association. And he is survived by his devoted, loving wife, Jamie Lynn Utic Webb. At this time, we have in front of us Garrett Miller. Garrett, I will add, is a two-time recipient of the Craig Webb Memorial Award, which is pretty remarkable. The first one you received was for EMS. What year was that? Twenty twenty, twenty twenty. So just a couple of years ago. So you've now gotten for EMS, and today you're here as a law enforcement officer. I have a proclamation I'm going to present, but I want to read a little bit about your background as well. The nominee from Harrisburg Bureau of Police, Patrol Officer Garrett Miller, a lifelong Dolphin County resident, resides in Upper Dolphin County, Williamstown?
Yes.
With his family. Officer Miller was hired by the Harrisburg Bureau of Police on January first, two thousand and eight. His wife Christine and their children, Alicia Riley and Garrett, wholeheartedly support its tireless dedication to serving the community. His exemplary record and contributions unequivocally warrant this distinguished nomination. And as we can see, he does, you do embody Craig Webb and his spirit and his dedication to community. As a purposely awarded to recognize emergency service providers who by their actions demonstrate loyalty, professionalism, leadership, dedication, integrity, high-quality patient care, and a tireless desire to improve the emergency service system within which they work. You are an outstanding nominee and recipient of this award, sir, the second time. I have a proclamation I'm going to read into the record, and then afterwards, I'd hear some comments from you, and then ask my colleagues if they want to make some additional comments as well. We, the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners, are pleased to recognize Garrett Miller as a two thousand and twenty-four Craig Webb Memorial Award recipient for Law Enforcement Leader of the Year. Whereas Officer Miller has served the Harrisburg Bureau of Police since two thousand and eight, exemplifying reliability, capability, and dedication, making him an invaluable resource to all who work with him. Whereas Officer Miller is a true servant to the citizens of Dolphin County, regularly handling large-scale and volatile situations correctly, professionally, with little to no need for direct supervision, always maintaining an even temperament regardless of the situation at hand. Whereas Officer Miller is currently assigned to a citywide unit due to his proactive policing experience and overall knowledge of the people who live and work in the city of Harrisburg. Whereas he is heavily involved in the training of new officers to the Bureau, has shaped the careers of many young officers, stepping up to give them the best experience as they are trained to work the streets on their own. He is an informal leader on the platoon, always giving suggestions and feedback, improve operations at both the platoon level and Bureau Board. Therefore, we join the two hundred and eighty-six thousand residents of Dolphin County in celebrating Patrol Officer Miller for his outstanding loyalty, professionalism, dedication, leadership, and his desire to continuously improve and to help the citizens of this county. And we do hereby proudly proclaim December sixth as Garrett Miller Day in Dolphin County. You can have a seat.
Speakers on.
Well, I'm honored to get the get this award, obviously, taken back from the city, put me in for the award, and I got received the award. I did work with Craig in the late nineties at Lower Square EMS, so you know, I consider Craig a very good friend. I worked with the town of Lower Square. I've been in the city for twenty-four years. I still am on the ambulance since I'm fourteen years old, up in Williamstown. But just, I'm grateful for the award and everything.
I just want to thank you for your service and thank you for your commitment across multiple departments, obviously, and even, you know, votes of service and and just thankful for all your dedication, obviously, winning this award twice in two different ways. It shows that you're, you know, truly serve the public, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to acknowledge, I see Councilman Ralph Rodriguez is with us today. Thank you for being here, council member. And I also see some of your colleagues. But the most important people, I think, are sitting over there, your family, which has joined you. Could you introduce the family that you brought with you?
Sure. My daughter Riley, my wife Christine, my mother there, Candice, and my son.
Again, we, I know Commissioner Pries talked about the sacrifice that's made by family. Obviously, that service is in your blood. You can tell by what you do, where you volunteer, and the level of commitment you have to serving others. And we are honored. We say that in this county, we certainly have some of the best responders anywhere in the nation, and feel grateful for the level of service and commitment that you continue to provide, both paid, unpaid, volunteering, and running towards being able to help always rather than running away. Our communities are much safer as a result of your service and dedicated service. And it's an honor to honor you today. So I think we're going to give it an opportunity to get a picture. We're going to do that in the beginning or the end, Commissioner. Why don't we just get up and do a picture with each individual as they come up, and then we'll get one final one. So thank you.
All right, as we continue, I'd like to welcome up firefighter Ken Slippe. Firefighter Slippe joined the Union Hoes Company of the Middletown Fire Department in January of nineteen eighty. He has held the positions of Lieutenant, Assistant Engineer, Trustee, and Secretary throughout the years. He was also a key player in the consolidation of the Middletown Volunteer Fire Department in two thousand and four. He has consistently been a top five call runner during his entire tenure with the department, and has been the department's top responder for the last three years running. He currently serves as a trustee and secretary, is very active with department training, and is this year's top responder to date with a response rate of nearly seventy percent. Firefighter Slippe is one of the most selfless people. This particular email is saying that I've ever served with, and I truly believe that he is worthy of this award. That's high praise. That's high praise. He is the epitome of what today's public servants should emulate. Thank you so much for your for your service. I have a proclamation I'll now read, and then we'll give you a chance to share a little bit. We, the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners, are pleased to recognize Ken Slippe as a two thousand and twenty-four Craig Webb Memorial Award recipient for Fire and Rescue Leader of the Year. Whereas Ken has held several positions during his time at Middletown Volunteer Fire Department, including Lieutenant, Assistant Engineer, Trustee, and Secretary, and has been a top five call runner throughout his entire tenure, and holding the title of Department Top Responder for the last three years running. Whereas Ken is the epitome of what today's public servants should emulate, putting the needs of friends, family, and even strangers above his own. Being one of the most reliable members of the department, as well as one of the most dedicated, whilst exhibiting true selflessness in all he does. Whereas firefighter Slippe has helped countless individuals, be it in May Day situations such as the rescue for fellow firefighter Sean Vanir, and rescues such as the midwinter vehicle extraction that involved a pickup truck suspended over a small creek, or through his own generosity and kindness. Or through his own generosity and kindness such as fundraising to help support the Manier family financially while Sean recovered. Whereas Ken has always been an indispensable asset to the Middletown Volunteer Fire Department and to Dolphin County community through his leadership, selfless attitude, kind heart and dedication. Therefore, we join the 286,000 residents of Dolphin County in celebrating firefighter Ken Slippy, who exemplifies the traits of Craig Webb. And we do hereby proudly proclaim December 4th as Ken's Slippy Day in Dolphin County. We'd love to hear a few words maybe about what this award means to you and maybe whatever you'd like to share.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. There's three words that come to mind when, when I think of emergency service and, and the department and what this word, this recognition really stands for. And they are preparation, persistence and perseverance. And I believe that, that those were, were traits that Craig displayed. I had the honor of personally working alongside of Craig for several years. And I believe that's the displayed also in the commission board here and the establishment of this award, you know, as they say, it takes one to know one. It's with, with that gratitude that I, I accept this on behalf of the department. Because no one acts as, as an individual in this business and it's only through the support of the entire department and the surrounding departments that the, these kind of necessary actions can take place. It's, it's with gratitude and, you know, with the support of everyone else that I accept this on, on behalf of all those that, you know, have, have made it possible for me to even be at this point in time.
Wow, even selfless in receiving an award. We appreciate that. So, so you've been at the fire department for, what would that be, 44 years?
Forty-four years in the county, yes.
Wow. Well, thank you so much for that, for your service and I'm going to give my colleagues a chance to share.
And this, another example of the police fire NEMS that the volunteers especially are the most valuable community assets here in Dolphin County. I look back at 2011 during those deadly flooding that we had in Dolphin County where the northern end of the county was completely shut off from the southern end of the county due to the storm waters. And I remember Chief Pat Leonard, Hershey Engine 48. He said that the, we had 7.71 inches of rainfall within 24 hours. It was a record here in central Pennsylvania. The storm just literally stayed above us and just kept dropping water. The Swatara Creek was at 27 feet. It's 20 feet above flood stage. I remember he said that our firefighters were rescuing people on their way to rescue people. And that's pretty remarkable and it was happening with fire departments all around Dolphin County. And when folks run from things, our fire police and EMS are running to them. And I'll just never forget what he said and what you did and what you continue to do these days. You and your brothers and sisters volunteering and police fire EMS, just remarkable job. Thank you.
Thank you. You've been around as long as I've known fire and I know the kind of example that you set in the Middletown Fire Department through not what you say, but your actions. Who do you have with you today? I mean, I know this is certainly a great achievement and one of the reasons I know that even though you're selfless, this is an award that's voted on by colleagues in the fire department. So it's especially gratifying to be recognized by your peers. Who do you have with you today?
My, my girlfriend gets first notice Cindy Garland. From the department, our, our chief of department, Ken Whitebread is not, not able to be here, but yeah, Justin Gilde who has acted as my press agent to step, you know, put this all together. And Chris Kobel as well. And James Whelan, who's acted, you know, as our past chief and a lifelong friend. And, you know, our, one of our junior firefighters, you know, Weston. Yeah. Weston.
There you go. Well, we appreciate, I know every year it's grateful to come to your awards banquet. We know how tight the department is. We know how much you've overcome with some tragedy and issues that happen within the department. And it's only served to reveal your character and the strength that you have down in Middletown. We're grateful for your service. So let's get you and your group up here and let's take a picture and let's give them another round of applause. Last but not least, if we could have Michael Kraska come forward. Good morning, Michael. I had the honor and the distinct pleasure of recognizing the EMS responder of the year. Michael's no stranger to volunteerism and I think you've worked in every section of public service all around, from, from the upper part of the county to the lower part of the county to being a former mayor to being engaged at multiple levels. So we want to thank you for your public service. And thank you for again, your willingness to commit to making the lives of those who we serve better as your top priority. I know Michael's journey into the emergency medical services began with the inspiration from the iconic characters Johnny and Roy. He started his career as an EMT working with Harrisburg River Rescue until 1990. That year, he joined the 11th class of the Harrisburg Hospital Institute of EMS, graduating as a paramedic. After graduation, Mike served Upper Dolphin County Emergency Services Medic Six and became one of the county's first emergency medical dispatchers. In 2002, he was promoted to the Director of Services for Medic Six. Among his notable achievements, I know Mike secured a $68,000 state grant to equip all volunteer fire department apparatus with AEDs and ensured that each fire department member was CPR and AED trained and certified. He also obtained funding for a new ambulance and squad revitalizing the entire fleet. Mike later moved to York where he served and we'll give you a little time, an excuse for moving to York for a short amount of time. Where you've served and this as the charge medic for medic 102 at the Memorial Hospital, still being involved in service. He eventually returned to Harrisburg, rejoining medic one in Harrisburg City. Mike's dedication and expertise saw him rise through the ranks from the street medic to captain and EMS specialist to assistant chief. He also contributed to the original PA Task Force One, which we know historically responded in many ways, including to the tragedy that occurred on nine 11. I also was Harrisburg Rescue One as a medical specialist. Throughout his career, Mike has been recognized with numerous awards, including Lower Paxton Firefighter of the Year, Harrisburg Service Award for rescuing a citizen from the Susquehanna River and the Susquehanna Township Distinguished Service Award for a technical vehicle rescue. The Emergency Health Services Federation has also honored you for your numerous clinical saves and pre-hospital deliveries. And I know you've brought a couple of babies into the world too. So we're grateful for you saving lives and bringing lives into, into this county. I'd like to read the proclamation into the record. The Dolphin County Board of Commissioners are pleased to recognize Michael J. Kraska as the 2024 Craig Webb Memorial Award recipient for Emergency Medical Services. Whereas Michael started his career with Harrisburg River Rescue when he joined the 11th class of the Hospital Institute, graduating as paramedic. A number of these things I've already announced. So if we can, we will skip to the end if that's okay, Michael. I know you're not much for the long-winded narrative, but we are proud today to join the residents of this county and the Board of Commissioners in celebrating Michael J. Kraska Day. And we do hereby proudly proclaim December 7th. So you've got a future day as Michael J. Kraska Day in Dolphin County. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
My wife Erin is here. The chief, Gary Albertson, a deputy chief here in Harrisburg, my colleague, assistant chief, Steve Boyer.
I know those gentlemen.
I, I knew Craig. I rubbed elbows with Craig Mill on many occasions, day and night. Whether it was in EMS or border's office. I could certainly tell you that his service and his legacy that he left behind was an inspiration for any EMS provider or firefighter, he's officer. Can't add anything more than what's been said by other recipients other than to say that if it wasn't for people like my wife and my family to support my, my occasion as a public service provider, I wouldn't be sitting here today. I, I can't tell you the countless amounts of times that I spend away from home and my wife has to, has to take care of the, of the homestead. And without her, again, I would not be able to, to be sitting in front of. So a big thank should actually better. I do a thank you for acknowledging, recognizing me today. Continue as long as I can to assert the count.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you for your service. And, and yeah, I mean, as we, as we honor all these individuals, obviously, all three of you, I think it's just a testament to our county and the fact that we have some amazing public servants in this county and I've got to meet many of them in this role. Being the rookie commissioner and, you know, getting the opportunity to, to connect with different people and, and seeing those of you who stand out, it's really inspirational and thank you for that. Also inspired by your stash, the last one too. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to reference that. Good facial hair, gotta, gotta love it. I do want to ask, who is Johnny and Roy?
Oh my God.
Is this, is this, I'm missing this? Okay, I'll have to Google this later. I promise I'll Wikipedia it. I'll find out what Johnny and Roy is. But, well, I, I'll get educated. I'll come back. I'll come back more prepared. But, but thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
Well, I think we should.
Do you want to answer the question? Who's Johnny and Roy?
I think our recipients should have an opportunity to answer that.
Johnny and Roy, if you go back into the early seventies, if you YouTube it. You can YouTube, right? You just put in an emergency and it is a sitcom, if you will, about one of the first paramedic units in the United States featuring Los Angeles County Fire Paramedics. Going out in the squad 51. I could certainly tell you, my mother is in New Zealand, tell you, she used to hang off the back of my bunk bed. But when I graduated high school here at this, I, my aspirations weren't high. I just wanted to be a paramedic.
I think it's fitting that all three recipients have spoken of their direct connection to the late Craig Webb. And it just goes to show that he has left a lasting legacy on other servants here in our community. Also, your initial actions and unique skillset when you come upon extremely stressful conditions many times determines whether an individual lives or not. And the amount of people and their family members and friends who are thankful for you and your service and those like you here in Dolphin County, the countless individuals whose lives have been saved by your actions are something that I know when you go home, you can lay your head on your bed and sleep well at night. And I'm glad you mentioned your wife because so many times we have thousands of volunteers and, and our, and our law enforcement community as well. When they leave their wives, their children, they're still at home and never knowing for sure whether they're coming back that night or at the end of that shift. And, and your dedication and commitment to our community is something that we are all very proud of. All three of you said thank you to us. Now we say thank you to you a thousand times over. You are the heart and soul of our communities and we can never say thank you enough, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest.
Same generation.
Thank you to all the award recipients. Also, special shout out to Jamie Webb, who obviously is the late Craig Webb's wife. I know she's also a personal friend and, and I know she's living in Florida now, but you remain with us in spirit. Our next item on the agenda is Human Resources. Tanisha Whedon, Tanisha? Good morning.
I'd like to request a vote on items 19 through 20 and 28 through 34 of the personnel packet.
So 19 and 20 and 28 through 34.
These are all prison matters, correct?
Correct.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Douglas. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Tanisha.
Thank you.
All right, Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out yesterday afternoon. Everything will be ready for your vote and approval next week.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Clark, to report Mr. Pease?
Nothing to report unless there are questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Pease? Hearing none. Solicitors, report Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two matters requiring board action, both of which have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Is there any questions for the solicitor? All right, it appears we have three items on the training packet today that also need to be addressed. I would entertain I would entertain at this point a motion for items one, two, and three on today's training packet.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Preece. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. All right, matters requiring board action. Are there any that need to be pulled out and or voted separately out of the two? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adopt items one and two for board action today. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items one and two under matters requiring board action.
Do we have a second? I will second that. Any discussion?
Yes, just want to be clear. These are related to our bridge inspection contract, the five-year contract that HRG was awarded.
Correct. This is our, this is the reimbursement agreement and accompanying resolution. As there are state and federal dollars that we receive, and this is required by Penda. Your answer to the question is yes.
Yeah, so I just want to remind the public that that process was a compromised process and therefore I won't support any measures furthering that process as I'm opposed to that process. And furthermore, I've received email, an email thread referencing our TSIP and DCIBG program, TSIP being Transportation Infrastructure Safety Improvement Program, DCIBG being our Dolphin County Infrastructure Bank General Program, in which there is communication between engineers that then gets forwarded to Mike Musser. Then Musser sends, sends emails where he CCs Commissioner, former Commissioner Haste, JTH Group to be specific. Why does he do that? I don't know. I asked if the county, for some reason, has a contract with former Commissioner Haste or Mike Musser under, under contract for TSIP or DCIBG work. I've been told we don't. At least that's what I'm told. I assume that's accurate. But it would seem as if, if that's not the case, then HRG would seem to have some type of consulting relationship with Mr. Musser and Mr. Haste. And either both or, or in some concert, it seems like there's something happening there. And, and it further shows the compromise of the process because I'll remind you, the compromise process was that former Commissioner Haste called our chief clerk to request that certain people be put on the selection committee for our bridge inspection, a bid process that is competitive and that those individuals get to give input to and rate and score every one of the engineers. And, and we took two of those recommendations and put them on the board. And so, or put them on the selection committee of three people. And so I just, I feel like it's, it's worth continuing to emphasize that it was a compromised process. And I will continue to uphold transparency and speak truth to, I think, some of these challenging decisions. This is a five-year commitment we've made. And, and I think, I don't think it does the public good when we, when we don't have a transparent, clear process that is without external influence. So that's going to be my position on everything moving forward.
Any other public comment?
Well, I'm going to ask our, our chief of staff to respond to that. This is the second time now this has come up. And I have, I had mentioned before that I had reached out the one time to those individuals who were put on the, the selection committee, contacted all three of them. And none, none of them said that the individual made any overtures towards the, the winning company HRG during those conversations. I just want to say that for the record. But I do share some of the concerns. I would appreciate if you provided me a copy of that email that you have at some point, Commissioner.
Yep, thank you. Vince?
Yes, so the, I just to clarify, there was one person that was recommended by Jeff Haste that I put on the committee. The other two members, myself and Chris Davis, were always going to be members of that committee based on how I understood the process to be and how it was run administratively in the past. And that used to include the purchasing director and the budget and finance director, which is now only one position that's held by Chris Davis. So, I mean, we've already knew all the names. Steve Deck was the other individual that was suggested to me, who I then went to other county employees and looked at his own background to see if I felt he was a fitting choice for that committee, which I did on my own believe so, as he is used to work for, as an engineer at different engineering firms and had currently been the director of the Tri-County Community or sorry, Tri-County Planning Commission and helped administer hats. So that, just for the record, is how that went.
If I may follow up again, we have a sitting commissioner who has raised concerns. Some of them are, I believe, are valid. And we need to do a better job communicating with the Board of Commissioners in the future when these groups or committees are selected so that the three of us are aware in advance before this happens. So we can discuss this prior to it occurring.
Yes, that is understood as we've talked about. I do want to make it clear that of the suggestions that the individual made, three of the four, or what, what were the suggestions that were made by former Commissioner Haste?
The only suggestions that I received were Steve Deck and George Connor. Chris Davis was not mentioned. And I had never stated that prior.
Okay, I feel like I have my notes say something different, but I will say that I was never informed that it went out to bid. I was never informed that we were selecting people. I was never informed that the bid closed. I wasn't informed until an engineering company sat in my office and told me it had gone out to bid and it had already been closed and that they wanted it to be a fair process. Was I able to ensure it was a fair five-year process? No, because I didn't even know it was happening. Once again, I think it's important that we recognize that is a compromised process in itself. The commissioner who's charged with voting on it doesn't even know it's happening.
And I know the, the sheet of the scores were provided. And I know that it was pretty clear cut related to the recommendations, at least from the committee's perspective, who, who the recommendation was related to the bridge engineer. So again, I think these are formalities. The only thing that I don't want to do is jeopardize federal or state dollars related to those transportation projects for either the county or municipality. And at least as I reviewed those individual scores from the folks, they were all in favor of the individual that was recommended. So is there, there was a motion made second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. All right, former business? Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Douglas?
I have no comments.
Mr. Preece?
Glad that we were able to present the Craig Webb Memorial Awards today to three outstanding individuals who are, but three that received the award. But as they certainly know and say readily over and over and over again, it's not just them. It's, it's everybody they work with and the families that are all part of this team that, that provide this great service to the residents of the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Preece. Only comments that I'd have is thanking the staff from Cumberland, Perry, and Dolphin for coming together yesterday for a regional solution related to behavioral health front door and a drop-in center. I know this was a, a, an effort that has been undergoing since about 2018 to be able to address intercept zero and our ability to be leaders in Pennsylvania to ensure that we provide options other than the front door of the emergency room or jail as the only entry point for behavioral health and folks who are struggling with both addiction and, and mental health. The idea of the opening yesterday, or at least the walkthrough yesterday, I think represents how future issues related to these concerns need to be addressed and solved. No one county is going to do it alone. There's simply just not enough resources. Our ability to come together regionally, both in Perry and Cumberland County and eliminate sort of the barriers that exist between the counties and ensure that we are working in a uniform fashion to be able to present solutions are critically important to this center, both opening and, and remaining viable. But I want to make it clear that there is concerns about sustainability and funding over the future years because quite frankly, you know, we, the idea of sustainability needs to be included with parity. The ability for private insurers to also be a part of the solution to pay for services and behavioral health services, which currently many do not pay for, as well as Medicaid rates are not keeping up with the level of care. In this case, we were able to gain a waiver from our behavioral health managed care organization to try to find about a year and a half of sustainability. But with future cuts and concerns and no increases in rates, there needs to be a full-out effort. And that's why I was glad to see all the members of the legislature there yesterday. The senators and even our federal representatives because we are going to need partnerships in order to try to maintain this as an opportunity. Since the state hospital closed, I said yesterday, we, we had this debate about institutional care and getting folks out of institutions. And I would venture to say, we're sitting here years later. Would you say the care is better inside a jail cell or inside a state hospital? I would venture to say that our folks are not getting better in Dolphin County prison. We've changed one institution for another that is, in my opinion, a lot less quality of care. And in this case, we need to find every alternative and ways to get people assistance and direct them into the level of behavioral health help they need, not institutionalize them in a way that's only going to deteriorate, decompensate their current level of condition. So that means still a lot of investment and partnerships need to occur and build out needs to occur for what happens after 24 hours. What happens for the five-day stabilization. Commissioner Douglas and I were on a call yesterday with UPMC discussing the idea of building out inpatient beds. And my suggestion was actually talk to the counties and ask them what we believe we need in the continuum rather than just building out what you think works from a business model perspective and figure out how we can take care of a longer continuum that hopefully will keep people out of the emergent level of care is their first place that they go. I don't know how many times doctors have said, you can't get in anywhere else. Go, go to crisis. And quite frankly, that's the highest cost of care and the, the last place people should go, not the first place individuals should go. So we, we have a lot of work to do, but yesterday I think indicated and really was a symbol of the kind of ingenuity and cooperation that can exist between counties to provide creative solutions. I don't think they're going to come from the top down, although we need help with sustainability and funding. So thank you for those who attended yesterday and for all of those who worked tirelessly to see those doors open. All right, at this point, it is time for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to participate in front of the Board of Commissioners today? Please state your name and address and you're going to keep the three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Slatter Township. While you were talking about the bridge contract and HRG, I Googled campaign finance reports on Dolphin County website. And they're, they're basically copies of, of things that are submitted by the candidate or their committee. And I noticed that in 2023, Jeff Haste has a campaign finance report to still, if you, if you bear with me for a second, I just sent you five documents each of you right now while I was sitting here. And I find it very interesting that in 23, a person wasn't sitting as a, as a commissioner here, but was able to receive a political contribution from a political committee that goes by the name of HRG PAC, HRG PAC. And as luck would have it, the person not in office who supposedly wouldn't be involved with HRG got this $5,000 donation. And then if you follow through the course of that year, the generosity that that person has to use that money that they got from HRG for something politically related, you'll see in another document that I just sent you. That person then moves that money to Pennsylvania for good government, $2,500. Better government PA, $2,500. Now this is in 2023 and this is Jeff Haste, not an elected official, getting $5,000 from somebody that you guys do business with and you think's great. And they get things on their merit. They paid him $5,000. Not saying it's illegal, but it's, it's a little concerning. He then transferred that to two PACs controlled by a person named Mike Musser, who's heavily involved in those PACs, who has used the same addresses as those PACs, who's collected money and dispersed money as those PACs. So in 2023, and this is clearly opinion, it looks like HRG gave money to Jeff Haste, who wasn't in office, who then gave money to Mike Musser, who seems to be on the emails that's involved in the decision-making of this board. Okay, then what also happens that's interesting that year, $5,000 also comes in to a non-commissioner from Prime Care, Prime Care, who then gets, and I sent you this, so you can look at that too. So another $5,000 comes in from, I can't see it, Todd Hoskins, Thomas Weber, Brent Martin, and they identify themselves as principals in Prime Care Medical. And then they gave Jeff Haste $5,000 to not lobby for them or do anything or have you guys do anything. But what's really interesting is that's the only money that moved that year. That's it in 2023 out of this account. You can look it up unless the page is missing. And interestingly, again, this year Jeff Haste reimbursed himself out of that. And I don't know if I'm at three minutes, but I'll wrap it up because you have the account. He reimbursed himself out of that same account slightly less than $4,000. So I'm just an average citizen in my role here. It's amazing that the people that give money to Jeff Haste, who gives money to Mike Musser, get the contracts in Dolphin County. I think you're on to something, Commissioner Douglas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other public comment?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Pamela Parsons, Holly Street in the city of Harrisburg. I observed last, at the last meeting, the questions that Commissioner Douglas raised about opioid monies. And I heard his questions today about the bridge contracts. And rather than focus a lot on people, I like to look at patterns. And so there is a pattern that is emerging here, several patterns, one of which Tom Connolly talked about. Another are the things that we've heard and seen that Commissioner Douglas has talked about. And I'd like to remind you that while we often think in binaries that something is either this or that, in life, there really aren't as many binaries as we like to think. And that often things are both and. So one can appoint people or give contracts to companies that can be qualified, can be a good engineer, your company can do adequate to good work. And they can get those contracts or get on committees through less than transparent, someone somewhat nefarious means. And so it's not a binary that when the issues are raised about how an individual got on a committee or how a particular company or group got a contract or consulting contract, it doesn't always mean that we're saying that those people aren't good at what they do or that company isn't good at what they do. What we're talking about is the process. And, and in this county, there's a pattern of not questioning the process. And that is, and that is just sort of how we roll here, it seems. And it's very true in, in our city governments too. In our community governments, we're seeing some. In our community governments, we're seeing some of that, some questions being raised in Steelton now. So I think that's something that's really important to look at. And while I can understand, yeah, this person is an engineer, and so they should be on that committee, but who were the other people? It is also my understanding that the spouse of the person who was arrested for theft at the, at the private club in Steelton that we've been talking about, the polling place at that fire department, the spouse of that person works for the county. And that person also sits on committees.
That is the time.
Concerning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners, sorry, Swatara Township. I want to talk first about the budget. I saw the budget posted online, which I'm happy for because I'm a nerd. I like numbers. I want to look through it and see what we're spending our money on. But I noticed the, that there's no millage increase for the library in what I saw online. I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong budget packet or not. But I am curious why we would not be giving the library a millage increase to get their employees to the $15 now are the same as we are of the other county employees. As we know, people need to live, and we need libraries, and we need people to work in them. So I think it's important that that be in there. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing.
And again, if you want to finish, I'd be glad to answer the question.
Yeah, okay. And then the other thing, I just want to speak on the Mike Musser situation. Been doing a lot of looking into it, and he's on a lot of boards. There's a lot of consulting contracts with Mike Musser that don't really make sense to me. Still, things that it doesn't make sense how Mike Musser would be involved. And thinking about the campaign contributions, the real fact of it is a lot of money in this county that goes to people at county level is like coming from HRG PAC, which means companies are starting their own PACs, and they're giving as much money as they want the candidates to gain favor. And like, we know that, like, right? And it really becomes a problem then when they buy the whole board, right? And so what's happened is we have someone up here now who didn't get that money from those PACs. And so what we're seeing is what happens when someone doesn't take money from these people, right? The grift starts to end. And I'm very concerned with the amount of money that Greenlee PAC, HRG PAC, Benicon, DevNet, and others are buying county row office seats. And then in between what we have is this Mike Musser, who not only has consulting contracts with the county numerous, which, which we're not even clear how much millions that he's milked off this county. We know he's milked a million.
Excuse us. Thank you.
We've all been there. But siphoning a million off of Middletown in, or Steelton in at least a year. And I'm really concerned about the amount of money he's siphoning from the people of Dauphin County at a time when we are raising taxes and we just heard the amount of money this county needs to address issues like finding sustainable funding for behavioral health. And knowing that those things are facing us down the line, it's unclear to me why the county can't. If at least nothing untoward is happening, there needs to be a consistent effort to put things online. Like, let's get all the county contracts online with consultants. It couldn't be that hard to do. I know other counties put all these things online in, in form of transparency. But there is something amiss here. And it is very telling that he is still being able to make these calls and be part of the family, reclaiming some of my time. And I think that the county needs to redirect, like, you guys, all three sit up there. I hear two of you, one of you bringing up stuff, one of you sort of going along with it, and the other very combative. And it makes me question why. And as we see with Jeff Haste, there has been a pay-to-play. And I am very concerned that we have another Commissioner on this board, who is now in charge of the board, who is also engaging in another pay-to-play. And I'm afraid of that because what we see happening out of Steel with a forensic audit, and I'm not convinced that this county shouldn't have a forensic audit, because I, I think that might need to happen. Someone needs to look at these contracts.
That's the time.
And, and just response to the question related to millage rate, I believe we received formal correspondence from board members and the executive director of the library to withdraw the request for a tax increase.
Okay, so I will talk to the board members who did that. But what I will say is that that your question not be drawn. Can they afford to do that, or was there political pressure to do that? Because you during that hearing made comment about why isn't the board here? Like, it felt like you were making it an issue.
I'll speak that it seemed like political pressure. I'm in support of millage rate increase for the library.
Yeah, so am I.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right, this time I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. You adjourn.